Good evening. Welcome to the November 29th Board of Selectmen meeting.
I'm going to start with county commissioners.
Oh, excuse me.
It's going to be a long meeting, so you might just sit back and relax. I want to call the meeting to order of the county commissioners for November 29th. The county commission meeting is being video and audio recorded. Is there any public comment to come before the commissioners tonight? Is there any new business for board members? The next item is approval of minutes for October 25th. May have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And we have with our motion to approve the payroll and treasury warrants for November 2017. Second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Are there any commissioners' reports or comments? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll try that again. Welcome to the November 29th Board of Selectmen meeting. We have one change to the agenda under selectmen's reports and comments. Number two has been removed. We just don't have those documents quite ready yet. Other than that, we'll move on to announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This meeting is also being video and audio recorded, and we're going to get a quick update from our sewer director about the Harbor, Shimo, and Plus area sewer extension project.
Good evening, everyone. Shimo and the Nantucket Harbor and Plus projects moving along extremely well. They have completed all mainline work on Vesper Lane. All manholes have been installed, and the temporary paving has been in place. They have a crew starting within the next two weeks, going back through and running all the laterals to all the lots, and that should take about a week's worth of time. There won't be any full road closings during some of that. It's going to be a fairly simple task. Crew two has completed Green Meadow. That whole mainline and all the manholes have been completed, and they're starting tomorrow to install all the laterals to the homes. They're going to just take and work their way back out of that whole development and finish that development completely. Crew one has now moved over to Wama Squid Place, and they're starting to put up the hay bales and all the silk fence and everything, and they'll start that project in the next couple of days. And all the other projects are moving along fairly well. I don't know if anyone's been near C Street, but the building and the rear has started to come down today. The station's on full bypass. It has been now for almost two weeks without any issues, so that's a relief. But everything's moving along, and you've probably seen the camera truck running around the island all over the place. They have discovered some rather interesting stuff, but I'd be here all night talking about it if I went into that.
What's your most interesting one?
Large holes in the middle of the street. And then some other ones that they found in Sconset is most of the houses on Baxter Road that were removed over the past few years, five or 10 years, none of the sewer lines were capped, so we have straight sand running into the sewer mains along the entire length of Baxter Road right now. So we're working on trying to resolve that very quickly, including where the lighthouse was. We found an open pipe at the end of that stretch, so wow. It's been an interesting two weeks.
Will you find something like that? Do you write a note of it and think that maybe it should be part of the moving process, that there should be a bond or something, and that we should be inspecting and then giving them the money back?
It is now. Any disconnects that come in now have to have a permit, and it has to be an inspection for every disconnect. And then when they want to go back and rebuild, we have them come in and get another permit for reconnect. So now we physically get to see the disconnects that they're properly capped. Now we're just chasing some problems we have to fix.
And there'll be hundreds of them?
Hopefully not hundreds, but...
A lot?
There's a few. So other than that, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, David. The Totino's Beach boat ramp continues to be closed for repairs, and those are expected to be completed by January 15th. We have a special recognition tonight for Ann Lindley from Our Island Home, 37 years of service, but I do not see her here. So maybe we'll wait a little, and if she comes in, we'll take it up then. Lastly, winter parking enforcement. We've had a winter parking enforcement plan that's been endorsed by the board some number of years ago, and I don't... Are you going to put it up, Erica? We just wanted to bring your attention to it. There are some sort of key dates in there. This was adopted in 2014. I won't go through every single item here, but there are different dates for different areas: residential parking, commercial parking, core district parking, maybe go to downtown because that seems to be the one that people are most concerned about, core parking district, timed parking enforcement. So the Monday after this weekend, after storm weekend, to the Friday before Memorial Day, there is timed parking enforcement from 8:00 to 4:00 in the core parking district. And there's a map of the core parking district online. There are no changes to the 15, 20, or 30-minute parking zone areas, and there's this one-hour parking zone, except this gets kind of convoluted, but except on Main Street between Center and Water. I guess that is north South Water Street. So anyway, I feel like I don't want to read the whole thing, but it's online, and it goes into effect a good portion of this on Monday, this coming Monday, December 4th. So I think the message is pay attention to parking downtown.
And what I would say is be cognizant of not parking downtown all day, that the businesses rely on turnover, especially through the holiday season, and you can park all day in the two-hour zones. So it might be a half a block or a block walk, but think of other people than just yourself.
This is the portion of our agenda for public comment. If there's something not otherwise on our agenda for discussion, you can come up and speak.
I just wanted to let... I just wasn't going to bring it up in the Shimo part of it, but just so everyone knows, the annual deer check stations at the treatment plant has been for about the past 15 years. To date, as of 5/30, there was 261 deer that have been checked in so far this year. And last night, the captain from the environmental police gave a very large and thorough speech to all the hunters last night that were out there about all the stuff that's on Facebook with the gut piles and everything. So every group that came in, he was very strict and forceful with every single one of them to let them know. So just so everyone knows, it's something you don't usually see, but he made a lot of comments to a lot of hunters last night.
Thank you for bringing that up because I saw those comments.
He was extremely firm with everybody last night, and every group that came in, he took them all aside. So it was nice to see that. And then the other game one was out there tonight doing the same thing, so just so that everyone knows.
Hopefully that will be effective.
I'm not on Facebook. What's the... Are people leaving gut piles?
Leaving guts.
Gut piles everywhere, yeah.
Trails.
Right in the middle of the walking areas.
He really... He read it the riot act last night. It was really good to get the word out.
So they're supposed to bring their ungutted deer in, correct?
Well, they're supposed to bring the stuff to the landfill or whatever, carcasses or whatever, but they're just... I guess it's pretty bad.
When they bring it in for a weigh-in, they're bringing the whole deer, though, correct?
They're bringing the whole deer, but it's gutted before they bring them in.
All right.
And the environmentalists are out there, Dr. Lepre's out there every night pulling ticks off the deer and for limes tests and everything. It's interesting to watch, but I just thought I'd bring that up to everybody.
Is there anything else? Okay, hearing nothing, I don't believe there's any new business. We'll move on to approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. I'd had one change on the minutes, but I think it's already been incorporated. Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the payroll warrants and treasury warrants?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the pending contracts? Are there any questions on the contracts? Any comments?
Madam Chairman, I just want to bring the board's attention to the fire station contract. This is more of a bid award tonight. The contract will follow, but we would seek your approval now to get it ready, the standard form of contract. As the board knows, there was a supplemental appropriation for this project at the special town meeting on November 6th that was subject to a ballot vote for a debt exclusion this past Tuesday, and that question passed, although voter turnout was low. We thank everybody who did come out. The total project, just I had a little bit of question about this from some board members, is $20,700,000, and that's composed of this construction aspect of the project of 15.4 million, and the rest is, I won't list every item, but it's paving, fencing, site improvements, designer fees, OPM fees, soft costs, contingency, things of that nature. And the bid award here, 15-4, there were four bidders in total, and this was the low bid. So just wanted to give you a little background on that, and we have three prior year appropriations for this project.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Some consent items. We'll send a letter thanking the Council on Aging. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice a little bit. Do you guys want to take these one at a time, or does someone want to make a motion to approve them all?
I didn't have any issues. Did you? Motion to approve all the consent items?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental request, 34 Orange Street. Is there somebody here for this?
So this matter came up because the owner of the property is looking to make changes to the front steps of their property on Orange Street. Because the steps currently encroach, any changes to that require a license agreement. We've been doing these regularly for the past few years. So anytime a change occurs, that's what triggers to be able to get the license. HDC reviewed the application. It was approved, and now we're going through this process because they can't be issued a building permit to do the actual work until there's a license agreement in place.
I have a question. Have they increased their ground coverage with this?
No.
So there's no changes from the previous?
That's my understanding. Well, I don't know about the full ground cover of the home, but the front step is, my understanding is to remain the same, except it's just going up, and there's going to be a little bit of overhang from the roof. So the overhang might come out a little bit, but the steps shouldn't be changing, is my understanding.
Is that new fenestration? Is that... Is the overhang new?
Well, the little roof part is, yes.
Okay.
I was a little bit torn on this one because I read through the HDC minutes. One, I couldn't find any historic documentation that this existed. I don't think that it ever had the portico over it. I don't know if the drawings are up there.
Yeah, they're the original.
And I'm not... I'm just, I'm a little bit worried about the precedent of allowing more structure to encroach into the street and to the public way. It just, it becomes quite a bit more massive by adding the big columns and the roof that protrudes even a little bit further. It's a matter of inches, but there wasn't a license on this already.
I had a somewhat similar concern in that it makes it... If we have approved these before, then it's very similar with the portico. I just think it's easy to say to approve four steps and steps that maybe need to meet code. I'm a little bit, I suppose, hesitant with something that's superfluous, and the HDC has already decided that it is, it's already approved.
Well, what was strange to me is when I was reading the minutes, it sounded like they were... There was a little bit of confusion in the way the minutes read anyway, that someone said, "Well, there's a door there, and they want to put it back." But the door is back. There was a photo... I pulled up the NHA website, and I found a very old photo where it didn't... It just had steps. And then I found a more recent photo where the front door had been completely removed, and there were no steps. They had replaced it with a window. So at some point, the front door has come back, which is historically appropriate. But it... So it just, it didn't seem like they necessarily had all the information in their review. I didn't have time to talk to anybody at the HDC level.
Erica, have there been other similar situations where it's been more than just the steps coming on to, over the property line?
We allowed... I'm trying to think if we ever did... Sometimes it was just the steps having, coming down or being rebuilt further out in. I can't remember there being a portico there. But when we did with the Dreamland, there was definitely more building material coming out over the street than there was prior to that. So, I mean, there has been an instance, but not lately, not with just regular residential homes.
And not with... And we're going to see it with houses that are lifted, you know, four feet, five feet for storm reasons, for building cover reasons. Some of those are going to probably be different because they're going to have to get into those. So I mean, but I haven't seen anything like this. I don't think it's egregious, but I agree with Don that the precedent you're setting is difficult if you're allowing people to encroach, and this doesn't seem like very much. But if, you know, if this becomes popular, is everyone going to try to do it? And, you know, without substituting my opinion for the HDC, I wonder what's wrong with that. But I'm not allowed to do that, so...
Well, I think even without substituting opinions for HDC, I do think it's a matter of allowing more, providing licenses for even more than just the stairs. The stairs make sense to me, but does it keep going further with what we allow, what we're giving licenses for onto town property?
So does our property include the airspace above? It does. Okay. So this does encroach on the airspace, so it looks like the...
Up to infinity.
Okay. So it looks like the stairs aren't changing, unless I'm an architect. Is that correct? The stairs aren't encroaching anymore, but this roof thing is, right?
Roof is in addition.
Okay. So it's within our jurisdiction to say no to it from a licensing standpoint, and we wouldn't be, you know...
The other issue, just as a policy issue, is this is sort of HDC and other boards and commissions. I think sometimes, you know, you can read it in the paper. We're being... Things are being made the responsibility of the selectmen or made the responsibility, dumped into our laps or into Libby's lap, like, "Oh, the board of selectmen are responsible. They'll take care of that. They'll take care of this." So promises are being made on our behalf, and we don't even have a say in it. And by the time people get here, they have expectations that have been built. So if the HDC, for example, in this case, is going to further encroach, you're going to allow things that are unnecessary to further encroach, it would be nice if they asked us first, is all I'm saying. And that sort of thought process goes to other things that are going on in the town as well. By the time it gets to us...
Like the banners on Main Street.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them. I could, you know, but...
Yard sales.
Yeah. And so I'm not, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to the encroachment itself on this issue, you know. I'm more worried about the precedent we're setting where, in all these kinds of circumstances.
You know, I'd be more comfortable granting them a license for their, where they are currently. I mean, to let them...
If they haven't made any changes, it won't really trigger it. It's only if they make the changes, is my understanding.
Okay, so they don't need a license to replace them. Let's say they...
Well, if they're not being replaced, then they don't.
And they're not being replaced in this scenario?
I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
If they just replace the... Say they had to replace the stairs with a slightly different design, that wouldn't trigger it, or it would?
If they touch the stairs.
If they touch the stairs.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying. I'd be comfortable with a license agreement to let them work on the stairs as long as they were put back the way, you know, without any...
Which we've done a number of those.
So you're in favor of like a like-kind replacement?
I don't know what the technical term is, but I'm not...
Just basically no substantial changes?
Zero-sum ante, you know, so... That's just me, so...
Yeah, I think if they have to make changes to the steps, to the stairs, sort of placing what for what's already there is the like-kind. Correct, Erica?
This isn't my particular... What they're planning on building isn't my cup of tea. I don't really personally like it, but the HCC approved it. We can talk to the HCC about future things, but I'll make a motion to approve this license.
As requested.
As requested. Then we can discuss.
Is there a second? My motion dies for lack of a second. With the pleasure, someone else want to make a motion?
So is our... What are our options? To approve it or deny it? Okay. So, you know, they can come back and say...
They're not asking for any other aspect except to add the portico, so...
So based on the...
That I'm aware of.
...concern about additional encroachment and precedent and all that, I'd make a motion to deny the license request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed?
I'm in favor of the time, four to one.
And looking at it, we're talking about a nine and 5/16 encroachment, which is 13 feet eight in the air. So that's what we're... Which is, you know, I'm not saying, I think we should do it, but I'm just, that's what we're talking about, so...
You think we should deny it?
I think we should deny it, yeah.
And they can come back and redesign it.
And if the HCC is a valid reason, if the HCC is a valid reason and wants to come and, you know, and say, "Here, this is why we need this here. This is why the client needs it," blah, 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 then we could readdress it. But I think, you know, I just think we should be getting asked prior to people approving things and giving, and letting expectations be built.
And I guess, maybe we set an expectation that we're more likely to be favorably inclined to license agreements that, as you say, are like-kind, put it back. You know, you can work on it, but you can't expand it. I don't know if that's a, you know, that's a sense of the board, or if anybody agrees with me, but that's really was the basis for my motion.
And I think unless there's some historical relevance that would show otherwise, yeah, I would agree.
Yeah. If it was there, it's easier to understand why we would allow the encroachment to come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
And thanks for doing the research on that.
I had to go back to my HDC hat a little bit, look up some old photos.
Again, it's important that this is not, we're not countermanding any HDC ruling. This is our, within our jurisdiction as a board, okay.
Okay, so next is request for approval to change of manager at Pharaoh's, the Greeden House. Does anyone have any concerns, questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, public hearings to determine the tax allocation, residential exemption.
I thought I was last. This is a continuation. You may recall, I did a PowerPoint on October 18th with preliminary numbers, just to kind of give you an idea of how the shift works and how the residential exemption operates. Since that time, we did open the hearing on the 15th of November, but the values had not been finalized. They were finalized last week, and we are finalizing the tax levy. It's going to be about $78 million, so tonight's numbers are actual numbers. The yellow column, I gave you a lot of numbers, and I apologize, but some of you are known for asking detailed questions, so I wanted to make sure that we had the information there. So yellow is basically status quo, using the FY '18 tax levy and new values. The average residential value has increased from $1,008,000 to $1,009,000. So if you go with the standard shift of 1.75 and adopt a residential exemption of 20%, the numbers in the colored rows at the bottom, Erica, will give you an idea of what will happen. There's an automatic increase because we did have an increase in our levy. So the average residential tax bill, and we're talking about your average residential value from which the exemption is calculated, that's going up. That's the green row. Try not to hurt anybody with this. That's that number right there. Then the brown is your average year-round tax bill. And then below that in the blue is your median year-round tax bill. So there are modest increases, and there's an impact to the commercial. I just used the standard. I used $1,007,000 for the commercial. I was running another average, and we have so many small units, it really kind of, it distorts the value, so I used the $1,007,000. And that's showing an increase of $277,500. So moving over to the other columns, because there was an interest in changing the residential exemption, the next two columns... Yeah, well, unless you can freeze those rows, I don't think you can. It would be a 25% residential exemption or 30% residential exemption and 35, keeping the same shift. But if you scroll back to the bottom, just to show you what happens, there is an automatic increase to the average residential tax bill, because basically you're reducing the number of, you're reducing your taxable value within that class, so you have that much more that's not raising revenue. Going over to the far right?
Ask you a question. So if I'm reading the... I don't need to go up to the columns, but when we look, it says, "Impact to Mean Commercial Tax Bill." When we change the split from 1.75 to 1.25?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. The first three columns are keeping the shift at 175.
No, no, I understand. I'm looking at the column, it says minus 281912, and that's a 1.25 shift?
Which column, Jim?
Which column are you in?
Oh, over there. Okay.
Yes.
It's a 1.25 shift?
And that's what's happening if we go to 1 point...
I understand. And that's a 20 and 1.25.
Correct.
So what's 25 and 1.25?
That would be the next column over.
And that is?
12.
It would be... Yeah, the next three columns, it's showing you the shift of 1.25 and then the various residential exemptions.
But what is 1.25 and 25?
For the residential tax bill?
Yeah.
It would be the brown.
Okay. So we're at 20 now, correct?
We're at 20 and 1.75 now.
I understand. So if we go to, let's just take the 1.25 and leave that, you know, in place. So it's 25 is 135, 30 is 472, and 35 is 816, right?
Correct. And then the next three columns would be a shift of 150, again, showing gradual changes to the exemption, going up to 25, 30% or 35%.
In the last column, you did just a slight shift in commercial. So you did 1.7?
1.7 shift.
So you did a slight shift?
Correct.
From 175 to 17.
So there's no increase? So this is a challenge to, like, we're solving for a couple of different variables. So is, I don't know if we want to throw out, maybe discuss the residential. I think we should increase it a little, but I've heard cogent arguments to not go all the way to 35. And I don't know if we want to go to 30 or 25. I'd be comfortable with either. I think we do should, I think we should make a change to the shift. I've been, you know, talking to folks, and I understand it's a way to have an impact on economic growth, on economic development, and we should do that. So I don't know, we just want to throw combos out there, but I'd be comfortable with a 1.5 and either a 25 or 30 personally, but for residential, I'll just throw that out there.
Was that 1.5 and 30?
Either 25 or 30, yeah.
I would caution us to stay on the lower end. Well, I would caution us to be conservative, so that we're, we want to do this as we need to. You know, we don't want to do everything now, because then people get set that that's what they get, and then when some of these other things come through. So I'd rather, rather than go to 30, I'd rather go to 25. And, you know, and then save some of our, you know, save the ability to smooth some more, smooth other stuff out later.
And would you do the same on the commercial, go to 1.7 instead of 1.5?
Potentially.
I mean, it's the same theory.
Exactly, it's the same theory. You go to 165, or, you know, just, you give a bit of a break, but, you know, save some of it later, and just set the precedent that this, we're using this to smooth out these impacts which are coming. Some of them, some of the impacts we'll see this year and next year, but a lot of them won't happen until the money's borrowed. And so, and Brian was talking about that tonight before we started. So we're going to see some impacts, but it takes a couple of years. So, you know, I think we could do a little bit now, and then still have that available as a tool later.
I like the 25%. You stay at 20, or if we feel like we need to increase it, go to 25. That's mainly because I've been sitting on Wednesday mornings at Capcom, looking at all the out years and what's, what's coming. And so for us to go right up to 35 now, and then have these things that we need, major infrastructure capital projects, we have no more room to, you know, to go up slowly. So I like 25, and I didn't really think about the 1.7 shift. I was looking at 1.75 and 1.5. But the 1.7 keeps it pretty much no, very little increase.
Right.
Right, for commercial. So I'm, right now in this conversation, I like 25 and 1.7.
I just still like 25 and 1.5, which is where I was last time.
Just to get something on the table, I'll put, I'll make a motion that we do a 25% residential exemption and a 1.7 commercial split.
Second. Okay, all those in, yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm with it.
Great.
Oh, I'm sorry. And see if anyone had public comment? It is a public hearing, I'm sorry, my...
Can we take that, that motion back?
Yep.
I don't think so.
So I'm going to respectfully disagree with the board. So I have three reasons to urge you to leave these rates unchanged, leave both the shift unchanged, and leave the residential exemption unchanged. The first reason is that the property tax rates, both commercial and residential, have been very stable for the last five years. And even if you take the projected 2018 rate, which is 347, and you add the capital cost that Brian has put forward, which amount to 21 cents, and you add those, your resulting rates for residential are 368 per thousand of assessed value, and for commercial, 636. Just to put that in perspective, those are lower than the rates in 2014. So these are not unusual rates, and they're stable. And the second reason is that they're among the lowest in the state of Massachusetts. So again, to put that in perspective, the residential rate is, would be 368. The average rate in the state is 1571. For commercial, it's going to go to six and change, and the average rate in the state is 1752. So I'm not sure that I understand the rationale for making the change. The last reason really has to do with you. You guys have the toughest job on the island, no doubt about it. If something is needed, if there's a problem, it all winds up on your desks. And these are very powerful tools, because they can shield the residents from the costs that have to be incurred to solve those problems. I've shown you numbers that you can raise tens of millions of dollars using these numbers. And so I urge you not to change them, so that you have them in reserve. A lot of things need doing, sewers, housing, our island home, roads, it goes on, and you know about them better than I do. And you need those tools. So I would urge you, since there's no pressing need, because it's stable, not to make any changes. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
I can make, I can make another one. I think we, I think we did take Mr., Dickler? Yeah, I think we did take some of your, you know, some of your work into consideration, and I think it was helpful. I think, you know, that's why we went to 1.7 on the commercial and not further. I do think, and this is, I have this argument on town meeting floor, I've had it for 20 years, it's a mathematical equation, the rates, you know, they don't, it's not the rates, it's the total amount you pay. And our rates are low, but our assessments are high, and our assessments slightly, value slightly increased this year. And I think what it really comes down to is ability to pay. A lot of times, people compare us to Concord or somewhere where the ability to pay is quite a bit larger than it is here. Our average wage is closer to, and even some of our homeowners' average wage is closer to Western Mass than it is to the wealthy suburbs of Boston. And so we, we have a difficult time, because we have to figure out how to keep people with low wages and, you know, fixed incomes and have owned their homes for a while. We have to figure a way to keep them here without raising it on them and everybody else. So it really is a balancing act, and I think, you know, I'm happy with where we ended up tonight. I think it's fine, but I, you know, but I think we need to be careful about doing it next year or the year after, you know, for the reasons he's saying and that we were saying, you know, like, do it the next time Brian says, geez, we need to smooth it, there's a big bump coming. So...
I agree with everything that Matt just said. If there are no other, did you, if there are no other public comments, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we need to redo that motion.
So I'll make the same motion, that we go with a 25% residential exemption and a 1.75 commercial residential split.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. You will have, a majority of you will have to sign an LA 5 for us, once we're final, once we're done with all the numbers, and I will email you with instructions.
Thank you. Okay, next town managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First off, we wanted to update the board regarding some recent changes to the open meeting law regulations, and then request some particular action as a result. So in your packet is a summary of what the changes specifically are. We won't go over every single change, and these are in effect now, but there are some that we need to pay close attention to. Specifically, the notice posting requirements. It is no longer necessary to post a meeting notices in two locations, so there's a little more detail as a result of that change. But what we would like the board to do is designate the town website as the official posting location, and that does require a vote. We think, actually, that may have been sort of done in the past, but... It was secondary, okay. So this would be the primary posting location. And then, since you only have to have one, we would only technically need to do that, but we would retain the one that's in the hallway of the town building. So at the end of this, if we, if you would, we would request that the board vote that.
Okay.
Some other notable items. There's, there's some different issues regarding how complaints are processed, which I won't get all the way into, but there are some changes there. Remote participation has had a change. There are five permissible reasons for participating remotely, and now, those have been deleted. And now, if a member simply states that their attendance at the meeting would be, quote, unreasonably difficult, they may participate remotely. And there's a special exception for commissions on disability on that. Maybe the most...
A quick question on that. Can they vote remotely? Or is there a distinction between participating and voting?
You can vote remotely, but you have to have a quorum and physically present.
Okay.
Do we, are there a lot of people on, that do that here?
Yes. I'm told that on some other boards, there are. Concon, is that one?
Yes. And I would just note, too, that if the chairman is participating remotely, that somebody else has to be acting chair. You have to have a chairman that is physically present.
That would definitely make sense.
Okay, meeting minutes, this might be, might be the most important item here. Approval of meeting minutes, open and executive session must now occur within the next three meetings or 30 days, whichever is later. So for a board like ours, it's, we're trying to get them really done by the next meeting or so. So I think we're within compliance of that. And boards that meet, you know, every, once a month or something like that, it's probably more doable. But we're really going to have to pay attention to this with, across the board, with all the town boards, committees, and commissions, because if you do not achieve that, you are supposed to notify the Attorney General's office and demonstrate that good cause exists for the delay. I'm sure they're not going to be doing a town-by-town inventory, but the spirit, in keeping with the spirit of the law, we need to comply with it.
So is that something that town administration monitors, or either through every, looking at everyone, or some kind of sampling technique to make sure that that's occurring?
Well, we haven't really come up with a process to do that yet. In fact, we've been talking about whether or not we might need an additional position, not specifically for that, but one of the duties might include that, in addition to taking minutes for the over 50 boards, boards, committees, and commissions that we have. Because the one dedicated minute taker that we have can really physically only do four or five of the sort of big groups that meet regularly. But we are going to have to be looking towards a way to monitor this, yes.
I just, I think that's important, and I think, personally, I think we should make the resources available to do that. Certainly, the administrative burden of responding to these complaints, plus the potential fines, certainly outweigh the potential cost, personally.
Okay, what, in the spirit of the law, what are the fines that are attached? Like, what section is that?
Wasn't it per day? Is that what you told me last week?
I just didn't see it.
I, I don't know if it's in here. We, I'd have to see exactly what the fines are.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying we should not do it. I just say it's, but I think it'd be nice to know that. And I think, and I support a position, if we, if necessary, to track these. I also think if, if we should know, if there's a committee that's, you know, doesn't do it, and they're asked and they don't do it, you know, we should be bringing them in front of the camera and talking to them, why aren't you doing it? Or, I mean, we should, you know, that way we'd be able to monitor that situation a little better.
It's just, it's going to take, thank you for the support on the resources, because is it going to take that to really keep on top of us?
You know, you should bring us a check report every quarter or something, or, you know, so we can take the appropriate action.
So that, we'll have to look into the actual fines. I just, I'm not seeing right here what exactly they are.
Well, I mean, regardless, it's important for people to have access to what's been happening, have it readily available, so...
There are some, sorry.
And we talked about the position earlier, and I, I fully support that we should try to get someone.
I had my pages out of order, so I skipped something that I meant to say earlier. And this just goes to the additional administrative requirements that are going to have to be met. The regulations require the municipal clerk, the town clerk, to provide new members appointed or elected people to boards, committees, and commissions, with all open meeting law determinations or violations that have been issued to the public body that the person is joining for the previous five years. And somehow, sometimes the town clerk does not always get those determinations. So whatever public body receives them must provide them to the town clerk. Now, in our situation, we were looking this up recently, we don't have very money, many, and pretty much they would come, be coming through our office anyway, so we'll, we're making sure that the town clerk has them all, anyway, but it's just yet another thing to keep track of and give to people when they get appointed, in addition to all the other things they get when they're appointed.
So right now, the clerk is current?
With everything.
Yep. And so if you were someone who's appointed or elected to more than one board, you need to get the determinations for each board that you are on.
I have a question. Page 68 to 77 was a list of board of selection. It started with executive session, and it shows if it's, and then, is it all executive session, or some become regular board? Oh, executives. So that's a list of the executive...
That was just to show you, because with the regular board of select minutes, we are 99.9% caught up. With the executive session, we are not. And that's something that we're addressing currently. We have a plan in place.
Full disclosure.
Yeah, but which is good. But then, and the other point, the reason I'm bringing these up, is this, if you look, what is that, 66 to 77, 11 pages? There's 11 pages to track the board of selection. So...
For one of your meetings, just executive session.
For one meeting that happens once a month. So you start saying, there's one meeting once a month, and there's 11 pages that we need to keep track of, and there's, Libby said 50 other boards and commissions. You know, it could be some that meet fairly often. You know, I think the burden for this is pretty substantial.
I mean, you know the HDC often meets twice a week, for many hours.
Yeah, for six hours. I mean, yeah. And we've seen some of their minutes, so...
Anyway, we just wanted to update you on it, because it's getting to be more and more significant.
So we do need to take action on the posting.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
So I'll make a motion to make the website the primary location for posting, meeting posting, official posting, and then also keeping the, kind of the hallway hard copy as a secondary. Does that make...
You know, that doesn't...
Doesn't need to be a motion.
You don't even have to do that, but just as long as the website is the primary location.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have continued discussion and review of the 2018 annual town meeting warrant articles. At your meeting on November 1st, we began reviewing preliminary articles. And I've updated the outline that we used at that meeting, and I'm just going to go to the things that have come in or changed a bit since that meeting. So the first category is other appropriation or finance-related. We have added a few potential articles. One would be to rescind the enterprise fund status of the solid waste enterprise fund and the island home, and revert them to the general fund. This is something that came...
Go ahead.
Up during the bond rating matter, bond rating presentation recently, and also, I think it's been raised by the auditor.
So we're going to discuss these individually?
Sure.
Okay, so I'd like to hear from Brian, the thinking behind this one.
The thinking is twofold. It's certainly been raised by not only Moody's, but Standard and Poor's during either ratings, presentations, or conference calls. Our auditors have raised it over the last couple of years, that they, on a GAAP basis, don't meet the requirements for an enterprise fund. I mean, in, basically, enterprise funds are designed for business-type activities that are self-supporting, and both the solid waste enterprise fund and OIH have not been self-supporting. I know that when this was the language or the motion and adoption at a town meeting to create them into enterprise funds was, basically, the motive, what I understand was that people wanted to be able to see what these, what the operations cost on an annualized basis to run. But there are ways within munis for us to do this without... But there are ways within munis for us to do this without having to have them as enterprise funds and do this. We took the first step, obviously, in the presentation to Moody's, which was to convert them on a GAAP basis into the general fund. This is a discussion point to get that discussion, to revert them back into the general fund, where both our auditors and myself believe they really belong.
So I think it's important to note, this is part of the plan to upgrade our bond ratings. I mean, it's part of the implementation plan. And at the time, because I was around then, we didn't have the confidence in the financial statements of the town, to be quite honest. And we felt that, or some of us felt that isolating them in an enterprise fund, that's not a good reason to do it, but it was- so-
Understood.
That's why we did it. So I think it's appropriate to rescind them. But I think it's good to have a little background, so the public's aware of it and understands it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Next is an item that needs- it's sort of in the early stages. It would really need some more work here. But it's the idea of establishing a fund into which fees for roadway-related work would go, and then the town would use the funds when it comes time to do the work, to do the work. So for example, Rob and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, on our thinking behind this, but the Prospect Street Water Main project. The idea would be that upfront, the water company would deposit whatever funds would be needed to do the repair work into the special fund, and then when it's time to do the work, it would be readily available to be paid for out of the fund. But upfront, these repair costs would be known and put aside. There may be another way to do that, but this apparently is used in other places. Additional authorization for septic system betterment loan funding. This came up at Board of Health recently, and Jim, you may know-
I can speak to that. So we had a recommendation from staff that we institute a cap on the loan- the septic system betterment loan funding. And we had a very comprehensive conversation that the board felt that we were very public in our selling the- all the changes we're making, and we- in terms of our higher standards for septic systems, and that we should have the funds available to do that. I think there were- it originally came through in 2009 for a $2 million, I believe it was $2 million, and that amount has held us in good stead for 10 years. But with the recent regulations and the use of the IA systems, the cost has escalated. We'd have about $850,000 left in the fund, which may seem like a lot, but the last request was for a shared system. It came in at $83,000, which was 10% of our available funding. So that's why we're asking for this additional funding.
And those are all still loans that get paid back over 20 years.
They get paid back, yeah.
What's the interest rate on those loans?
Brian?
And is there any cap on the amount that someone can borrow?
I'm not entirely sure if there's a cap on what they can borrow.
Currently no cap, but we look at them by- because it's a case-by-case. One of the issues we're facing is some people come in with some pretty high landscape, you know, the cost of landscaping, and we're taking a look at that. But this last one was a big one, but it was a shared system, or more than one home, so.
I think- I might be getting it confused with the privilege fee, but I think it's 4%. I think we- there's a fee from the- or an interest rate from the state, and then there's one that we charge as well. But I think it's 4%, but I'll double-check and get back through the town manager to the board.
The next item, I think it came out of a discussion that you and I had, Matt, about the possibility, and this would definitely need a lot of work, the possibility of establishing a special fund to help property owners demolish houses that may be on the verge of being eroded away before they erode away, to get it gone before that happens. But I haven't even had a chance to really look into the legality of it yet, but it was an idea.
I don't know the details. I just know that the town gets stuck with the bill. So if there's some way to work, to incentivize people and work with them ahead of time, and, you know, and have it done properly to begin with, it might be easier for both parties.
Yeah. And then it doesn't become a public safety hazard.
Exactly. And I'm not sure quite how you do it, and what's legal or not, but I just think from a common sense standpoint, it's a tough time for the property owners. They're losing their property, and they don't, you know, and the insurance doesn't want to pay in large part until it's gone. But then we're stuck with the, you know, the stuff in the beach and in the wash sometimes. It's just a bad situation if there was some way to, you know, to help them along in their bad time, which at the same time was helping the town, and, you know, it would be a positive, so.
So we can look into that more if people are interested in it. Next, we have zoning bylaw and general bylaw amendments. Andrew, I know, is working on a list of his articles, and I think may have sent me something today, although I didn't really get a chance to look at it. And Andrew, I wasn't sure about if we're doing retail marijuana zoning refinements at all.
I don't know either. I guess I need to hear if- I think that because of the schedule for the rules and regulations, I did send you an article about, we're going to see maybe some draft rules and regulations from that committee in December.
The cannabis control.
So I don't have any specific changes yet. And again, because I think the timing doesn't really work for us on that. If you have any ideas that you wanted to see, certainly open to hear those. I did- I know, now I need you to hold your disappointment, but it looks like I'm not going to have a lot of zoning articles this year. I only sent five to Libby, so.
Does that include citizen articles?
It does not include citizens. I have no control over that.
I know, I know.
But there may be, there's some others that I- but I don't see a lot. I see maybe 10 or so.
My own view of the retail marijuana zoning and refinement, we made a big case to town meeting that we were going to wait until we got all the information. So I personally would rather not have anything personally, but it's just-
And I have nobody coming to me asking for, whether it's citizens or people who want to get in the industry, asking for any changes. I've not heard any interest in that.
Right. My understanding, I mean, we do have a special permit application for the location for the medical facility that was discussed, that was before you, that you all approved. So they are moving forward to get their permit. And I did see, I think recently, the other facility is asking for a change of location. So I think there was some question, I think, at town meeting, are there enough locations or whatever? And I think these two entities have found adequate locations in the districts that we identified.
We don't know about the first one that's now the second one yet.
Which one?
Mass Med Spa hasn't submitted anything yet.
I've seen a request, just recently, that- oh, I think it was addressed to you, but anyway, maybe it came in late.
We did, but it didn't have the location.
It didn't have a location.
I saw a map that showed it on the corner of Arrowhead and Old South Road.
That has not been provided to us.
Okay.
So some internal communication.
So, anyway, that's where we are with the zoning. And the other thing that you flagged there, Harbor Place is in that group that I sent you. It came in late, after 2:00 today, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We were talking about that a little bit today, just about sort of doing a chart for the Harbor Place proposed zoning change, what it is now, what it would be changing to, and what the implications are in terms of density, parking rules, because I think the new zoning would completely waive all parking rules.
Right.
Height allowances, and what the permitting process is in each zone.
Right. Right. And I-
There was just some question about analysis.
The intent of that is-
Analysis.
Right. And the intent of that zoning change is that that is supposed to be connected to a development agreement that you execute with those owners. So it's not just that the zoning is intended to advance without that.
Yeah. But I think that was part of comparing what, how it changes, what the costs and benefits are.
Yep. We can produce that, that's no problem.
Yeah, I think, and I was going to say this about all these, you know, in general, and I'll just follow up. In general, I think any- anything that comes to town meeting, whether it be, you know, home rule petitions, citizens' articles, stuff we put forward, we as a town need to understand the financial impacts, you know, and really, you know, how many kids in the school, all the different impacts. We should really have a, you know, we should have a good handle on that. And a lot of times, I don't think we do, and we run out of time. So I- and that was in large part why we pushed to move up the timeframe a little bit on this, was so that there was more time to do a little bit better analysis before town meeting, because otherwise it ends up just being a, you know, sort of personality of who's going to give their friend something. And I think that we should be really thinking about the best interest of everybody in the whole town. And so, you know, I think as a general policy, citizens' articles, zoning articles, town articles should all know what they're about. And I just think it's just really important. And so, you know, so I'm happy to hear that we're going to be able to do that for Harbor Place. I don't want to get the cart before the horse. If part of our- if part of our ability to negotiate is the zoning changes, we don't want to give up that negotiation of ours. We don't want to give that up, and then say, "Oh yeah, they'll be nice to us later." You know, it doesn't seem to work that way, as we have learned. And so I think, you know, again, that's-
Yeah, it will just- it will, to have it for the whole board in a side-by-side comparison, I think will help everybody in terms of thinking about the development agreement and getting something-
Right.
Done sooner than later, so that it all makes sense.
Right. And I think, you know, for the planning board to give this a positive recommendation, they're going to look for an executed development agreement, because we're in full agreement to what you just said, is, you know, we don't want to change the zoning and not have a clear understanding of how the plan will be executed and other things, because of the importance of this site. So, absolutely.
So what's, who's working on the development agreement?
The- well, I'm definitely working on that.
Okay.
Libby and I have had discussions, and town council will be a critical partner in that, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Andrew.
Okay. General bylaws, we had some discussion previously about possibly regulating or prohibiting even outdoor televisions or indoor monitors that are visible from a public way. And at your November 1st meeting, you asked if we could get a recommendation from the HDC or the Sign Advisory Committee on that. I have communicated with them, I have not heard back yet. Home rule petitions, I had a little bit of a question about the merger of WannaComma and Sconset, and that is still pending. So if we're keeping in with our routine course of action with the home rule petitions that haven't been approved yet, we would just sort of reauthorize all of them?
Libby, before you go back to the signs, I will say, I think the one place that we had the most problem, that we had the most problem with, did a very much better job last summer, once we've talked to them a couple of times. You know, I think they really did take it under advisement, and it wasn't a huge distraction at the top of the hill. It was still there, but it was a lot more in keeping. It wasn't a big advertisement. So, you know, I do think that if the Sign Committee comes up with something, that's great. If they don't, and it isn't an issue again, it's, you know, hopefully it'll be the same. Anyway.
Thank you. I forgot to add to mass general law acceptances, there's nothing under there right now, but I would add in parking benefit district. There's a general law that we discussed at a recent meeting that the board voted to put on the warrant, so I would add that one.
And under bylaw, you may need to do a transportation and parking commission, if we're going to be doing that?
If you can add to other.
Oh, I understand.
I've got that. That is going to need some work. I had initially suggested referring that to the Government Study Committee, but I think the board wanted to move a little quicker than that. So that's something that we need to get some input from town council.
So we're going to discuss that later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And then from your November 1st meeting, there was a discussion about Island Home, and it was to be determined later as to what that meant. However, then you had a subsequent meeting where we did something a little bit different, so I would take that one off.
Yep.
And town meeting authorization to pave Lover's Lane, this is something that's come up internally, and we're going back and forth as to whether or not we actually need town meeting approval to pave that road. We may not, and if we don't, then we'll take this off, and if we do, then we'll leave it on. And then right now, I think we'll have, I say, two dead exclusions here, but it's probably more like three at this point, based on the discussions that have been proceeding so far with Capital Program Committee, the DPW garage, Old South Road improvements, and we have upgrades and renovation to the Marine Department building, which would be partially covered by a state grant. So when it comes time to adopt the warrant, we would probably want to put ballot questions on as well.
So I know we've spent a lot of time over the last year talking about the Old South Road improvements, and I think we vetted those projects. I don't recall that we've had a conversation at the board level. I know it's with, you know, Capital Programs about the DPW garage. I think personally, we'd make, it's a huge, it's a, you know, $18 million, I believe I saw. And I think it'd be nice to have a conversation about that outside.
We talked about that earlier today, about getting a presentation on that. I had this, I said the same thing.
Thank you.
We received 26 citizen warrant articles as of the submittal deadline of Monday, November 20th. As of today, the articles have still not been certified yet, so we're hoping that sometime soon they will be. And that's it for now.
How many of those were zoning articles?
Do you know? I'm not sure. Several.
Yeah, there was one that was, wanted to take away the privilege fee for their area. I think that one's going to be an interesting discussion.
Does anybody have anything else at this point that you don't see on there? Okay. So what we're going to be doing then, going forward, is developing some of the, further, some of these items that I said need to be developed further, and then probably come back to you later in December with a more refined list. And then after that, probably we'll start with the draft warrant, and looking at that at the end of December possibly, or beginning first meeting in January. Next, under town manager's report is review of some recommendations we have traffic regarding traffic and parking regulations. So just a little history on this. This agenda item started with commercial vehicle parking down, overnight parking downtown only. And it stemmed out of a discussion the board had last winter and spring about commercial vehicle parking overnight in the downtown area. And for the third or fourth time, that discussion had come forward and by different groups, and this time it was the guesthouse group who said their businesses were being negatively impacted by enforcement of the overnight commercial parking, because some of their guests were, had commercial vehicles, and they were parking overnight, and they were getting ticketed. So the chief and Eric and I have been meeting off and on to go over what we ought to- so at that point, we, the matter was referred back to town administration to come back to you with some recommendations. So it has taken some time, but that's what we've done here. And as we were going through this, we realized that we have a couple of other traffic and parking issues that have come up since then as well, specifically the Sunset Hill request to expand the commercial parking district to cover that area. And that was referred back to the chief for a recommendation, so we have a recommendation on that. And we thought we should just throw in the establishment of speed limits in certain areas as a result of last year's town meeting action that hasn't been totally completed yet. So that's the most minor of all of these. So regarding the commercial overnight parking, we have something of a, sort of a lengthy document in your packet. And what we tried to do is separate these things into categories. So the first is the commercial vehicle overnight parking. And we've given you a bit of a history of this. As you can see, we've been talking about it a lot since 2014. And the board has amended the regulations three times so far, and most recently- And most recently, there was this discussion from the guesthouses. And we've had the on, and so that's where we've picked up, picked this up. But we also noted that there, over time, there've been these kind of issues or loopholes that have arisen, and we've tried to identify what those are. There was some discussion about, well, I won't go over all of them, reading, reading it, it's, it's right there in the packet. But, so we're trying to deal with all of those things, but there, I mean, the one, you deal with one thing, and then another pops up, and then it just goes on and on, and someone is always going to have some kind of an issue with us. It's not possible to please every group or accommodate all of their needs here. So our recommended action on, I don't know if you want any more backup or history on that, but our recommended action is shown there. We have gone ahead in consultation with chair and vice chair to schedule a public hearing for December 20th, for you to actually consider making the changes. And that was sort of a measure to just get in place now, in case you wanted to make changes before the end of the year. And if you decide not to, then it, we just cancel the hearing. So there are a few items here that we've brought forward, and I don't know if I'm the best one to explain this. Chief, do you wanna just go over the language changes? And again, these have changed quite a bit since 2014.
Okay. What we're recommending is essentially in part a rollback to what it was when we very first implemented the commercial parking district. And back when we did that, the original regulation provided that anybody who could provide evidence to us, being the police, that they had business of a commercial nature in the commercial parking district. In other words, maybe they're a cleaning company that cleans businesses at night, that kind of thing. They, we could issue them a permit to be in the commercial parking district with their commercial vehicle between 2:00 and 4:00 AM. That seemed to work pretty well. It was when we got into, anybody with an Nantucket address with a commercial vehicle should qualify for one of these, so that they can, for whatever reason, that's when we started having problems. And then it further got to be problematic when it became more than just people who lived on the island. It became businesses who didn't live on the island that registered their vehicles to an address on the island, and then become qualified for a permit, which is what we're seeing right now. There are even businesses, for instance, that it may be an island owner that has the business, but his employees live off island, so they're, they're driving the work trucks downtown and parking them. So the employees, when they come back to work the next day, have an easy way to get to the job. So there's a lot of abuse of the system right now, which we're, we're experiencing downtown. Not to mention the fact that if you go down there this weekend, the town pier parking lot, the town lot, there won't be any place for customers down there, it'll all be full of commercial vehicles on the weekends. So that, that's become a bigger, bigger problem than what it was in the, in the past as a result. A second part of our proposal here is to create two different classes of permit. One is for vehicles under a gross vehicle weight of fifty-three hundred pounds, which essentially is an F-150 pickup truck and down. Leave that at twenty-five dollars, and for anything above fifty-three hundred pounds, which are your box trucks, things like that, maybe your bigger pickup trucks, F-250s, F-350s, your vans, your big work vans you see out there now. I got a range, I've got a couple of examples where those things range, like the pickups from five thousand pounds to a Dodge Ram 150 van is nine thousand pounds. And then a NPR box truck is twelve thousand pounds. I mean, so, but raise that up to a hundred dollars per permit, and then we.
Let me just ask you, what behavior do you think that'll change?
The, the dollar amount? I think it may discourage some people from purchasing them, or may not.
Is it gonna keep the person that's, people that park downtown overnight, so they're, they can take the boat home at night and come back the next morning? Is it gonna change that behavior?
Well, what's gonna prevent that's gonna be the first part, where we allow, where we only allow somebody who has proof of the, of business down there to park in there. This other one is gonna be for people who, there will be people who have, you know, some excuse, maybe they're, maybe they have to be on their fishing boat by 3:00 AM or something like that. You know, coincidentally, they drive a box truck, well, they're gonna pay a little more for the, for the privilege. And then, if you go further down, our commercial vehicle town lot permit, we're recommending that that fee be adjusted. And it just, that, that permit is valid for a calendar year. So something to keep in mind about that, right now, they can't park in the town lot down there unless they pay a four hundred dollar fee, and they're registered for off-island vehicles. They can't park there until after Columbus Day, and they have to be out of there by Memorial Day. So it, they actually pay eight hundred dollars for that privilege, cause they pay four hundred dollars for Columbus Day to the January 1st, and they pay another four hundred dollars from January 1st to Memorial Day. So we're suggesting make it a thousand dollar fee, and maybe make it for that period of time.
So their permit's not valid if they buy it January 1st through the?
If they buy it, if they buy a 2018 permit, it's valid through Memorial Day, and then valid for the next part.
Okay, so they would pay four hundred for that?
So they get a year's worth of parking, but if you're looking at it from the time period, Columbus Day, whatever, they're paying eight hundred dollars. So what we were thinking was just make it a thousand dollar fee, and make the time period, which I don't think was very clear in here, from, from Columbus Day to Memorial Day.
That's one less, one less trip to get a permit, too.
I just had one comment on that to consider for the public hearing, or a couple of comments, is I think it's, it's problematic with big weekends. I, I think that you might wanna consider it starting November 1st after Halloween, and being, having Thanksgiving and stroll weekends excluded, and having it end April 15th, or whatever date is prior to Daffodil Weekend.
In theory, like right now, for the 2017, we've only sold twenty-nine of the four hundred dollar permits. So if we got rid of most of those twenty-five dollar residential commercial permits, which we would get rid of by adopting the first part, you really don't have that many off-island commercial vehicles taking up spaces. Right now, there's a hundred cars down there, off and on cars and commercial vehicles, cause they all have either the twenty-five dollar permit, or they have the four hundred dollar permit. Matter of fact, between the two of them, there's a hundred and, a hundred and forty permits that are out there. And vast majority of them park in that lot. And there's about twelve or so a weekend that we ticket the people that don't have a permit. And it's, you know, it's the same vehicles over and over for the most case.
What's the cost of a ticket, if they do?
I think it's fifty dollars, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So, and that's, so that'll be something else we should think about at some point, because the, the cost of a ticket should be, you know, three to five times more than the cost of doing it. You know, and you could ratchet up, or whatever, it's not for tonight, but I just think, you know, it's fifty dollars, and they can get caught how many times, someone's just gonna take a chance in the cost of doing business.
Well, there were a number of people who, on like rainy weekends in the summer, just parked in the town pier spaces, because they'd just take the ticket. The valet was full.
Well, and I, and I, I've sort of brought some of this up three or four weeks ago, because last year going into, we had a lot of complaints after stroll weekend. The, you know, a third of the parking lot at Grand Union, or whatever, New Stop and Shop, New Harbor Stop and Shop, whatever we call it now, is a third, you know, a third of that is taken away for the tents. And people come downtown and there's nowhere to park, they go to the, go to the town lot, it's full, they go. And they were parking, last year, they were parking on the street all the way down past Cumberland Farms. And they were, and they were coming up Cliff Road, all the way up Cliff Road, cause there was no, you know, these places are all full. So I, I just think it's, you know, I, I blame myself for not getting this on earlier, so we could maybe address it, but I think we should be addressing it when we can.
Well, and just so you know, we've, we've put a hold on selling any 2018 permits, and we've not sold any, waiting for something to change here. So, you know, in theory, come January 1st, nobody has a permit to park downtown. That's it on the commercial. The other, on the expansion of the residential parking district, looked at this several different ways. There's still some ongoing discussions with, I think, traffic safety about the potential of making some one-way street changes in that area that would affect this somewhat. But looking at the, what was discussed at the last public hearing, and the concerns that were expressed, I think that there's definitely a problem on Sunset Hill with the parking of vehicles. And I think that, you know, it's, it's become an easy place, the closest place to go, because there's no permit required. We can extend the residential parking permit to that area without any real problem. The, the problem comes up for those residents who use Sunset Hill, because it backs, their property backs up to it, and their, the front of their property is a steep hill down to Westchester. But it's really not a stretch, we could include Westchester up to Liberty Street in that residential parking district, and it wouldn't really have that big of an impact. The difference would be the people who live on Westchester that currently enjoy free parking would have to pay for the residential parking permit every year to park in the street. But most of the houses along there have at least one parking space.
And what I would suggest looking at that, I go by this a couple of times a day, is that triangle. There's about six cars that park on that triangle as well, but then there's no parking all the way up North Liberty.
Yeah, it, well, North Liberty's pretty narrow.
Exactly, so there's no parking past that little triangle area, but there's, you know, three or four cars.
See, what we, when I, we took this into consideration, the, the rule, if you did that triangle, you'd bring one, two, three, four, maybe five other properties into the district, that'd be eligible for a permit. And, you know, I mean, that's, that's fine, as long as you understand what, what that means. It's, and that would be the ones across the street, any, cause any, any residents that fronts that line would get, get a permit.
So the ones on Westchester are already fronting one or the other?
Yes.
So it's the two to the left here?
Yes, right there.
Those are the two that, and then the one right here?
Well, and then there may be right there, and then, yeah, it depends on how far that, where that line went.
Yeah, so you'd be bringing in three, maybe four.
We, we also looked at, I, I know the chairman made a couple of comments about making some short-term parking up there in front of the old, or the oldest house. We would discourage that just from the simple reason that it makes it difficult for enforcement when, because the amount of area we assign to a person is determined by how often they have to get by there to check the vehicles. And I'll use that space on Orange Street, there's a, it's in the residential parking district, and there's a business there that has some thirty-minute parking in front of it. And we get a lot of complaints because that parking's not checked very often. It's because there's a person designed, or assigned to that district, and it's set up so that they can go by all the spaces once every two hours. So they're not really getting by those thirty-minute spaces, except for once every two hours. Where downtown, where we have the fifteen-minute spaces, a person's assigned a very small area, and they're, they're able to get by there at, at least once every fifteen minutes to check the vehicles. So if you start adding sprinklings, smaller time zones into these two-hour districts, it creates problems for enforcement, it creates complaints, because we just simply don't have enough people to get by there that often.
And the, and the comment I'll make on that, my wife actually owns that, is the complaint.
I didn't know that.
I know, I didn't think you did.
Yeah.
So, full disclosure, but I think, and that has had thirty-minute parking forever.
Yeah.
And it, it's the same situation she has that we had next to the stop and shop, where we put the half-hour parking, because people, if they have the sticker, they would park in there day and night. And, you know, and even now, sometimes there's cars that park there six, seven days in a row. You know, if it's down the far end, she doesn't really complain. If it's, you know, up there impacting her business, she complains, but she doesn't like to, and it's an uncomfortable situation. So whenever we, if we do go to a different, this is one of the kind of tricky things that has to be figured out, because if you, we don't find a way to put turnover in those, in, you know, sort of unique places like that, then we lose those as commercial buildings. And so, you know, when we go to a, you know, a parking system, we have to figure out, how do you enforce a place like that, short-term? How do you enforce, you know, somewhere like a long stop and shop? How do you enforce fifteen-minute next to the pharmacies if we still need it? Be, so that people just can't park all day. And I think, I don't have the answer to that yet, there's smarter guys than me and, that work on this. No, no. Yeah, yeah, but see, she's not in the district for the, for the, for these part, this parking, but she's a, she's a, what is it? It's a half-hour?
It's thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes for certain times, until five at night or something, and so.
And it used to be fifteen minutes when it was the bake shop, but the, I think the, the nature of that business was just more volume, and so people weren't lingering, because you go in, you go out. Where with, I think the business that there is now, you're apt to spend more time there.
And I think the, the map didn't make clear also, is I think we would recommend that you not only extend the residential parking district up Westchester and Sunset Hill, but also the commercial parking district as well. So, yeah, it, it would have the green lines going around it, as well as the red. Yeah, I thought you did pretty good, Eric. You got the little box in there, that's more than I can do, so.
Did the red lines?
She did.
Oh, that, there you go.
And then, the third item that we're looking at there, that, this is just an administrative cleanup thing. If you notice, the old regulation simply said, in accordance with the provisions of Section 18. Well, Section 18 of what? It didn't say what, we're just cleaning the language up, so that we know exactly what it's referencing. And then we added C, which accommodates the new twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, which kind of memorializes what you did, what you adopted at one point in time, put in, and, and with town meeting vote, yes. That's all that is, is just cleaning up the language. And that's it. Oh, there was the hotel. There was a request from the, from some of the hotels to allow them to use their guesthouse permits for commercial vehicles in the downtown area, we recommend against that. It would be a, how do we tell, you know? And everybody always says it was hanging up when we're out there ticketing, unfortunately, it's not. So, a lot of people, so it, it would be very difficult, I think, to, to say to one group, you got a commercial vehicle, you can park down here, just cause you're renting a hotel where everybody else, you'd have to say, no, you can't. And they typically are the bigger vehicles, too, like the electric trucks and things like that.
So we weren't looking for any specific board action tonight, unless you didn't wanna do any of this, in which case we would maybe not do the public hearing. But the plan would be to go forward with the public hearing, and a little bit represent some of this, and then you would take action.
Is everybody okay with that?
For me to know who's gonna be unhappy with this, because if we get, you know, maybe, just so we have an understanding of that, and maybe ahead of time, so we can be aware of it.
The guesthouse group isn't probably gonna be very happy. The, the group that, how can I put this? Goes downtown at night and likes to, and prefers not to drive the, the Bobby group.
Who doesn't wanna leave their commercial vehicle downtown.
Doesn't wanna drive, run home.
Wants to leave their car downtown, because they don't wanna drive home.
That was the argument that put the loop on.
Other than that, I think. Which I hope that they will still do that, and not drive home, because the ticket's gonna be a lot cheaper.
Those are the groups that we have heard from so far. And then we may hear from other groups who will actually like this, because they are finding commercial vehicles are parking in their neighborhoods overnight, and.
I think a lot will. The Children's Beach people, contacting regularly. I think the people that go, that go down and can't get in the town parking lot now, they wanna do the right thing and park there to go to hockey or whatever on the weekend, there's nowhere to go. You know, there's people like that, that this will help, you know, this will open up some parking, you know, hopefully, but.
Should we, what's the forum for adjusting or? Should we, what's the forum for adjusting or evaluating the parking violation fees? Parking tickets?
That would just, there's a schedule on this traffic regs that identifies what the fine is for each type of violation.
If we wanted to change.
The same way, you just advertise it and.
But we better be careful about it, because I think there's statutory caps.
$300 for these, yeah.
I'm just, we talked a little bit about, I don't know with all the details about the, that this cost of doing business, and it may not be a high enough bar for that one parking lot. And, and I just think we should at least briefly talk about it and decide whether we want to take any action now, because I don't, I don't know how much this is going to have an effect of that.
I brought it up because Desmond, when they were, gave their presentation on the parking garage, those guys, they, I read some of their stuff, and they were recommending that the cost of on-street had to be, you know, be greater than the garage, and the cost of tickets had to be three or five times greater than the cost of on-street or garage. Otherwise, they wouldn't have a change of, you know, attitude, not attitude, change of, people wouldn't change what they do, their pattern. And so that's why I brought it up. And I mean, I'm not sure that we, that I know what that is, but.
And I think that if the ticket just, if the ticket's $50, but the annual permit is $1,000, then there doesn't have to be an adjustment, or else it's well worth our while to at least do it 20 times, which is a lot, so.
Change of behavior, that's the word I was looking for.
My interest, real quick, if I could, I would ask just consideration, it's something I need to do myself also, with the, the town lot and the implementation of year-round bus service. One of those routes for the year-round service is back and forth to town along Old South Road. So I can foresee that the two fairgrounds, park and ride lot, will solve this problem of making parking in the town lot available for stroll and these type of events. Perhaps you just don't allow the commercial vehicle parking in the town, in the 37 Washington Street lot anymore. And that's what else you're buying with the year-round service, is that those vehicles are now parked at two Fairgrounds Road, so that parking lot's available for everyone.
That's great.
That's a good suggestion.
If we have enough space there, though.
Another, another reason to get year-round bus service.
So are we good with advertised?
So are we good with the public hearing?
The way it's advertised? I know you made a note about date, changing the dates in the commercial vehicle town lot permit. Currently, we don't have it advertised like that.
Or do we want to take Mike's suggestion?
It goes from Columbus Day to Memorial Day.
Maybe we just be a little more vague in the ad about, we are considering changing the dates.
Yeah, and the year-round bus service won't actually implement till next fall. So, and we're talking about January 1st to Memorial Day or a shorter period.
But it'd be great if the stroll after this one, that lot was open. It would be a huge victory.
So could you just repeat the, the dates that you were thinking of, because I'm going to have to amend the language to present it?
The dates I was thinking of was November 1st till, I guess, the Friday prior to Daffodil.
And you wanted to bump out stroll and?
And bump out stroll and Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving Day?
No, weekend. The four days.
And I know Chief Pittman had concerns about that as well.
So maybe, so if it's easier, either you do what Mike says, is not allow them in the lot at all, period, and you don't have to worry about it, or you push it till after Thanksgiving. But.
Or after stroll.
After stroll. It would just be, I think it creates more of an issue with, with the police department. No, okay, this weekend, we, this weekend we're allowing it, next week we're not. It gets confusing. So, maybe you just do it the Monday after stroll or something.
And if the fine, if the fine's $50, I'm just going to leave it up there. Over stroll, not a problem. It's just a part of the cost of being there, right?
And we'll fine you, hopefully, we fine you four times.
Yeah, three or four times.
So the Monday after stroll to the Friday before Daffodil weekend.
I just want to throw out there that I am part of the demographic that Bobby's been protecting, as someone who only has commercial vehicles. So I'm not, I understand, I think the loopholes have been significant in the impact of people taking advantage of it, significant enough that we have to change it, although for myself and other tradespeople, I, I'm interested to see who will be impacted and how often. So, I appreciate Bobby's sentiments, but I do think we have to make a change.
I also understand I have two commercial vehicles, but I still don't agree with it. I don't think it's, it's too small of a group to make a bigger decision.
And that's, that's my question that I don't know that we can answer very easily, is I'm not convinced it's that small a group, considering how many tradespeople there are on the island. But again, I think we'll have to make the change and see.
Well, I would argue it's a large group. I agree with you. And, and, but the problem is when you add a loophole, one of the things I said is, when we voted on, I said, this is a loophole, and we're going to have trouble. And I think it was a 3-2 vote that, that got it through. And, and so I think it's a larger group than we think, and we left the loophole in. And then there's the whole issue of liverboards. And, you know, do they all get priority? And do they all, they didn't now. And so, you know, and they were all, they were unhappy. That's another group. When we talked about liverboards in the, in the, you know, so I think that there's.
We, we took care of the liverboards.
The liverboards were like a dozen people.
They are, but it's.
But they're addressed in the existing limits.
They are. But they came in, and they were one group that came in upset. And, and I think we have to be, we have to be thinking about it when we start doing the, the numbers, because when I looked this summer, there was a bunch of Airbnbs that were being rented on the harbor for, for serious money. And so, you know, do we want to be encouraging, you know, do we want, ought to be encouraging, you know, so, you know, it's just an interesting issue, put it that way.
Chairman, one thing I can mention too, that when we had the announcement about the winter parking, one thing that is overlooked by a lot of people, and it's really relevant to this stroll weekend, is this time of year, parking in the town pier portion of that town lot is permitted by any, anybody can park there. And every time you go by there, it's empty. So you just can't park there overnight. But regular parking is permitted without a permit at the town pier lot.
Do we need to change anything with signage so that people understand that?
It is confusing. But it, it's one of those things, because of the layout of the lot and what's permitted, what's not, it's difficult to, to make it clear for every aspect of it. So it just, people just need, if they can't find anything in the back, they certainly can park in the front there and feel comfortable. They won't get a ticket.
Everybody who's watching now knows the secret.
I, I don't, I'll go down and look at the signs tomorrow, and we'll try to make it more clear.
I think the signs should specify that.
Yeah, well, the signs already have a whole lot of writing on them because of all the different rights, but we'll, we'll look and make sure.
To have underutilized parking in such a premier space, I think it's worth better communication.
We good? So selectmen's reports and comments, review of a draft proposed motion regarding downtown parking from the November 8th meeting.
Yeah, I, I put this in, I, we, we wanted to vote on, and I read, withdrew the vote so that everyone had a chance to read it. Basically, what I read that night that people seemed to like was from, I moved at the Town Institute of Parking Management Program. I read from that down at our meeting that night. I didn't read the first three parts of it. And so I wanted it to be out for consideration. And I included Nelson Nygaard February 2011. They have another, I think, June 11 that wasn't updated, so we may want to consider that. But the, the reason I put that in is because that has specific recommendations, and it talks about a lot of the issues and how to deal with them. Now, we have to figure, if we wanted to do this, we'd have to figure out the right sequence to, to implement these. But I think, I just didn't want it to be, I get worried that we're going to, we're going to make things worse, that we're going to do a sticker for $100, and we'll raise some money, and everyone will think that we've done the right thing. And in fact, what we would do is we would make it, the situation worse. If we, so there's, and I could go in why that would be, but the Transportation Commission we talked about earlier, Benefit District, we talked about, the, the parking fund earmarked, and in a lot of cases, you want to have a fund that's earmarked for, for things in that area. So people who are impacted the most are benefiting from it, and they, that helps with some buy-in. And to also be working on alternatives, so we can get more people out of cars when it's nice out, so that there's, you know, that's a positive. And then the last part was about hiring an independent consultant in case we need it, because as you can see, this stuff is very confusing and a lot, it takes a lot of time. And we don't have the time as a board, and I don't think the police have the time, or Libby has the time, to really stay on top of some of this, which is why I think we need to go to a commission format. And then the top part is just, I believe, this is being, I think this is all being pushed now because of the parking garage, and I don't think, and I know people said the garage will be, will work by itself with, you know, with or without parking downtown, except that that, I don't necessarily believe that. And I think our consultant in there, and I know, not even think, I know the consultant we've hired in two other places that they've done work for has made this as a recommendation that you institute on-street if they want to be successful with the garage. Now, neither of those places went on and did the garage, but that was in their recommendation. So I just feel like the two are linked.
I'm comfortable with the motion as you'd read it prior. I just think the first three parts aren't necessary. I, I think that this is something we should be doing regardless of whether we move forward with a garage or not. I think it's just, it's, we're just at that time. We've grown so much as a community. And I'd love to add in having, moving forward with an independent review of the Nelson Nygaard to update it, because I think that they've got great stuff in there, and it's just that it's a little bit outdated now. And, I mean, I, I think we should move, move ahead. Those are my comments.
I'm glad to hear you say that we should, that we should do this, even regardless of the intramodal facility. I agree. Because things have changed. Things have grown. Technology's gotten better. Political will's changed.
Yeah, I would agree. I like Matt's points, and I think that's a great addition as well.
So I guess, is your, is your motion to, to accept what I read and add the review?
The review of the Nelson Nygaard.
Um, well, if someone would make that motion, that would probably be better than me making it.
I, I guess I agreed with, I'm not sure who, a couple people at least said that we start with. Yeah, the I move that personally. I think it's, and I was one, you know, I, I was one that felt that they were in tandem, but I think for a lot of reasons, one of them is just the timing of them. I'm not sure we should link it at this time. And also, I have a concern about the, the list of including but not limited to improved NRTA, parking garage, alternative transportation. So if I, my concern is that these become a higher priority, and I think this needs to be vetted by another group. It, these aren't, for example, the, the recommendations from the Nelson Nygaard. They had a whole list of other things they thought the money should go to. And I didn't know if that's, that was your personal review, or were you reflecting the Nelson Nygaard study?
I was reflecting Nelson Nygaard. I was reflecting also, that's, that's including but not limited to was to include Nelson Nygaard. But I was picking off the things that we all, as a board, have spent a lot of time with in the last few years. Improved NRTA, parking garage, alternative transportation, is things that we've talked about. Alternative transportation, I mean, you know, bike paths and sidewalks and, you know, encouraging those types of uses during the warm weather. That's stuff that we have spent a lot of time on, so.
Operating a self-sufficient fund, setting policies and pricing to require no taxpayer subsidies, I, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what that means.
Well, I can tell you my.
I know, but the fact that it's unclear, I think just adds.
Well, I, I can, if you'd like, I can clarify it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, my, my point, my thought on this is that we should, is, we, we could, if we do this properly, we can raise, and Mike will tell you, we can raise a lot of money. And, and we can do a lot of good, we can raise a lot of money, do a lot of good, and it could potentially, if we structure the garage properly, the on-street parking properly, it, it could do a lot of good. And, but what I don't, what I'm afraid of is we'll end up spending 30 or 40 million dollars for a parking garage, and then we won't, we, we won't have the rigorousness to change the pricing, to look at the demand, and do the, you know, make the hard decisions that are needed as we move along, and that we'll put in place a parking commission, and they might not do that, because, oh, well, it was an override, and our taxes are cheap. So I was putting that in, you know, and I understand that that may change as time goes on. But I, I think the goal should be that this throws money to all these uses and pays for itself. They shouldn't be squeezing out other things in the town budget, so.
Maybe we could add the words, like, with the goal of operating as a self-sufficient? Do you have a comment, Mike?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, and believing me, I do not want to slow the momentum of this discussion at all. I think this is a great discussion on the board and something that's needed. My hesitation is the specifics to the Nelson Nygaard study being included in the motion, because that almost obligates you to the system that they had proposed at that particular time. And perhaps that needs additional discussion on the details and specifics to that. That paragraph is great, and probably doesn't need the Nelson Nygaard reference. And I think it covers the universe of parking management principles without necessarily binding you to a particular proposal.
I think the idea was to go back to it and look at it, but maybe that's not clear.
To me, it almost, it almost locked you in to that particular proposal.
Okay.
And, and just further with just the fund, maybe adding such as, but not limited to, those particular items could be good language, because there's things like sidewalk improvements and things like this that, you know, we just can't think of right now. And marketing, my gosh, marketing of, of a parking district to make education of, of what these opportunities are, that's, that's definitely an eligible use of those funds, according to the statute.
And that's what I would like, that's where I would leave it, with, with funds earmarked for public improvements in the district, period, and not list personally any of them. Because I, you know, what's the relative value of them? What are we, you know, we're going to get the sidewalk people who say, well, I want sidewalks in there, so. Unless, the board is agreed, and we take some time and say that these are our priorities, and maybe we should do that. But I'm, I'm not comfortable saying that these are the priorities.
Well, we'd have, if we were going to do that, if we're going to do just the district, we'd have to make sure that the district included the other parking areas and, you know, we'd have to, you know, the other parking areas and other places.
The park and ride lots that might be, use those funds. And I would just, while I'm here and talking about that, we do have students that are working on a parking management project for Worcester Polytech Institute. They're actually doing an exercise with a survey in the community. If you haven't participated in the survey, I highly recommend you do that. There's a presentation December 12th, where they'll show the, their findings of their report, which will include a prioritization what the community believes those funds should be spent on. They'll actually rank those and help give you more informed.
Wait and see what that is.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Where can we find that study? Where is it? Is it on Town website?
The Nelson Nygaard?
No, they're, sorry, the survey, survey.
The survey is available online. If you haven't been sent the link to the survey, we can definitely make sure that you get that link. Right now, it's been circulated amongst the, the presidents of homeowners associations and friends of civic league. If, if, if you've been engaged in, in any type of civic discussion, there's good odds that you've received a solicitation to participate in that survey.
I've received one. Matic, I think.
I got Matic.
Yeah, sent me one.
And, and for those of you who haven't, I encourage you to, board members to participate in their interview, because they're bright, they've got some great ideas, and it was an interesting conversation.
Now, my, my, my concern, and I, hopefully I'm wrong, but my concern about the survey is that it's, it's going to lead to a, you know, I think people are going to, they're going to pick something that isn't necessarily going to work, and may, in fact, if you talk to, you know, talk to, you know, people in this industry, it might actually make it worse. So everyone's going to say, geez, I'd rather just pay $100 and be able to park down there with the existing rules. That'll be great. You know, why change anything? This is Nantucket. That'll be great. Well, that isn't following demand management principles. And I think that that could have actually, and I've been told by someone who knows this very well, that that could have a negative impact, and it could make people feel entitled and feel like they could come down even more often downtown and stay longer. You know, so I, I just think we have to. So I, I just think we have to be careful. Your surveys are very good, and they could, you know, what people are willing to want to spend it on, and that stuff is good, but I think we, you know, we are here at the table and have to make the long, the difficult long-term decisions that we, you know, and I'm sort of happy that we've got a group, and Mike probably is, that's looking at this and sort of saying, geez, we have to do something different. And that's a huge change, and I would hate to make half steps and be stuck. So that's...
Just to clarify, Jim, your issues with after create a parking fund, that section there, you are interested in ending after with funds earmarked for public, public improvements in the district?
I just was reluctant to delineate them, but I think, you know, I agree with the portion, because it wasn't clear, but with that suggestion Don made about the making them self-sufficient.
The goals.
The goals, yeah. I just, I just thought, you know, there might be some other things that we want, I don't...
Would Mike's suggestion changing including, I think this was your suggestion, change including to such as but not limited to? Would that, that's more of just a...
If you put anything in, it's a, and maybe we want NERTIS, maybe we want the money to go to the nervous, NERTIS services. I'm not sure we do or don't want the money to go to the parking garage. I think we have to know more about the parking garage, so. But I do have a concern on the first four paragraph where it talks about the centerpiece of which would be a multi-story parking garage that the town would own and operate. I don't think we've decided that the town, the town's going to operate it. I don't think that that's, so I would, I would, my, my strong preference is to remove the first three paragraphs.
And I'm not opposed to us removing the first three to, you know, and, and I'm not, but I do think that is what's being presented. And so, you know, we have to understand what, what does that mean? What's the impact? You know, like, that's part of why it's important to know the number of parking spaces under the two different zoning scenarios, and how many might want to be in there. At some point, we're going to have to negotiate with the owners for the parking garage, and I, you know, I'm, my guess is they are not going to, that they're going to have some demands themselves. They did in Newburyport, and they negotiated very, negotiated very strongly in Newburyport. And so, you know, and they actually built the parking garage in Newburyport as opposed to Bar Harbor and Plymouth, where they didn't. And so I think that we, you know, we have to be clear that, you know, the developer is on one side with their goals and their desires, and we are on the opposite side in a negotiation where we have to have the best interests of the entire island. And I think, you know, I just think we, you know, we have to keep that, and sometimes it's things that may, we may individually may not want, but we have to, you know, we have to take care of the Nantucket, so.
Well, we've hired an independent consultant to review the intermodal center, and I just think that that's a kind of a interrelated but separate project. And I'd be comfortable if we took out the first three, we just strike the Nelson Nygaard but leave in the demand management principles. And we'll know that someone's going to go back and review that in terms of the recommendation. Put a period after funds earmarked for public improvements in the district, and then go to with the goal of operating as a self-sufficient fund.
So I, you got that, Erica? I'll make that as a motion.
Could I make a quick little suggestion?
Yep.
Instead of saying funds earmarked for public improvements in the district, what about for public transportation improvements period?
Yeah, I would, but I was, my only concern is just keeping it sort of that first line is a sentence with a full stop after is that it would limit it to, or it suggests that we're limiting it to just in the district.
Why don't we just say public improvements in Nantucket?
Or just public transportation.
Public transportation, I think Libya's, yeah.
Okay.
Mike?
If I could, if you do have a parking benefit district, the funds have to be spent within the bounds of that district, so that you're bound to that.
Thanks.
And maybe public transportation or multimodal transportation could be something you could add, is that, this language, that way it'd be all encompassing without picking three or four particular ones and guessing at what the rest of the array are, but let me have it specific to public transportation and multimodal transportation options.
I like public multimodal improvements in the district.
Okay, so what is it now?
Public multimodal improvements in the district.
All that sounds good so far, that last main paragraph. Any changes to that?
I mean, if required, issue an RFP, I mean, I'd just like to basically say, I think we should move ahead with hiring someone to give us a new proposal.
Why don't, how about, and, okay...
So I'm going to rescind my motion, because we're, which is fine, we're just, you know, we're just...
Well, we're still talking.
No, no, we're still talking about it. I don't think we're ready for a motion yet.
So back to that, that middle paragraph there, create a parking fund with funds earmarked for public multimodal improvements in the district, comma, with the goal of operating as a self-sufficient fund setting, fund setting, blah, blah, blah.
Yep. Yeah, you're just taking out that middle portion.
And then the next, and if required, I would strike issue an RFP to hire, and maybe actually strike if required, just and engage an independent consultant, because if procurement is required, that's apparent.
However, we need to procure it.
Engage an independent consultant accountable, blah, blah, blah. Now, we are going to have to locate some funds for that, which I don't know where they're going to come from exactly.
Well, and, you know, to me, I'd be comfortable just asking Desmond to do it, but working for us. I have a concern about hiring another consultant.
No, I, I would like Desmond to do it, but I just didn't want to violate any procurement process.
We can't say, we can't specify the vendor, huh?
No, because we have, gonna...
Depending on how much it is, it might require an RFP, right?
Right.
All right. No heart attacks, Brian. We do know better.
So sorry, we're keeping most up.
So do we have that? We're going to strike the first three paragraphs.
Yep.
And then where it says I move, we're going to strike the Nelson Nygaard reference. And then in paragraph seven, we're going to say, create a parking fund with the funds earmarked for public multimodal improvements in the district, comma, with the goal of operating as a self-sufficient, blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
And then paragraph eight, and engage an independent consultant accountable to the Board of Selakman, and so on.
Mike?
So, public transportation and multimodal.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about the word smithing.
It's fine.
So I will, with that change, I'll make that motion.
Okay. And I'll second it for discussion. Part of why I said if required, hire an independent consultant is, my concern is if, is Desmond is paid for by somebody else working for us, they are going to be working for both of us, but a lot of time, you know, you just have to be careful, you know, who's the master? And if required, we may have to go hire somebody else if it isn't, sort of, if we feel like, you know, we're not, that the town's overall needs are not getting the first priority. So that's why I had if required in there. The other reason is we may want to go back to Nelson Nygaard and work with them through Remain or someone, and I want us to be able to do that. You know, there are already discussions going on in a work group, work group with, you know, with Remain and those guys at, you know, so I think that we need to leave that open, a little bit open somehow.
But I think the motion would let us do that. I mean, we can always come back and decide to have, maybe, maybe we'll want to do peer review of Desmond. Maybe we'll want to hire an architect, I mean, somebody to do peer review. So I think...
Yeah. Sorry. I think it does leave it open. It certainly doesn't...
As long as it does.
Tie us to, using Desmond, Desmond, there might be efficiencies in that. If it's an RFP, they might bid, someone else might be, we might like the other person better.
But I was also thinking, we may not...
And there may be an additional review.
But we may not have to spend a lot of money if Remain is willing to help us, if we, you know, if Desmond does what they're going to do, and they include all this under the money we've paid them, and in fact, we find we need to buff up a couple aspects, you know, potentially that comes from somewhere else. I just, I would, I just want to do this as efficiently and cost effectively as possible.
We haven't asked them to do this.
And I think the money should be town funds, not through Remain, or I think that, I think that even makes a vote more independent.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Are we good?
Yeah.
Motion?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And thank you, Matt, for taking all the time.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for working through that. Are there any committee reports?
I have a, I have a, if someone gives a report, I'll, I'll find it.
I had Capitol Program Committee, and it's, you know, they're a good two and a half hours of, you know, digging through. We've been doing transportation lately, a little bit of our Island Home, things that we've already seen here for OIH, but transportation, DPW. This morning, we went over the Old South Corridor, which has been through MPDDC many times. We looked at it here, digging in each specific one, and then trying to figure out how to group them. How do you, we kind of got a little ahead of ourselves this morning, but how do you explain this to the public? And they're all very, very confused, because it's a lot of money, but it's really important, and how does it all connect? And really good conversations. And so we're ranking everything right now. And so I think in a couple weeks, we'll see all those rankings, and then I'd figure out, you know, how to rank them, priority.
You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Keep talking, you got me. No, yeah, you, you got me. There was a, if anyone didn't see it, there was an article in the Globe Today that I thought was really interesting. And it was a development, $260 million luxury condo being built in the Seaport District in Boston. And the interesting part is they needed 3,000 square feet of the city sidewalk in order to build this development. It was not possible to be done without the 3,000 square feet. So the developer approached the, and I always, the BP and EDC, so the Boston Planning and Economic Development Commission, and he brought his, oh, give me the word.
Appraisal.
Thank you. He brought his appraisal, and the appraisal was for $55,000. And the BP...
For 3,000 square feet?
For 3,000 square feet, which is like two-thirds of the lot that I live on, on Cliff Road. And so, so it's a good-sized piece of sidewalk. And, you know, and remember, this is a $260 million luxury condo building, he's built, tower that he's building. And so the Boston Globe and a couple fiscal hawks caught wind of this and were not too happy. And they started kicking up a stink. And what happened is they decide the, you know, I guess the Boston Board, or, you know, the, the government there, you know, was feeling the pressure and thought, we better look at this. So they did an A, negotiated with the developer. And lo and behold, what came out was almost $2 million for that property. And so, so all of a sudden, they went from 55,000 in a giveaway, which is kind of how the BP and EDC has been operating for years, and it became $2 million into the town coffre. So the reason I sort of do, I'm putting that story there is, is, you know, I've been doing this a long time, and it, and it takes me a while to figure some of this stuff out, but all of a sudden, I realized that that's sort of how it works. And that's how, you know, and it's structured that way. Like the Planning Economic Development Commission, you know, the planning board answers to, they, they don't answer to the town. They don't answer to the town of Boston. And so, you know, we have to make sure that we have, you know, that we have a separate entity looking at the impacts and the costs and making sure the best deal is, because it's very easy when you have someone else, you know, sort of like an enterprise fund that's off on their own, accountable to someone else, to not really worry about the town. And I think there's a, you know, there's a cautionary tale in there for us as a community that, you know, we have, you know, it's our job here to make sure that the numbers, you know, that we are the fiscal hawks, and we make sure that the things that are done by other boards and commissions and things are truly in the best interest of the town. So that was my...
And you're, and you're our representative there.
Well, I, I need, I, it can, it has to be more than just me, which is why I'm hoping that we've got...
So bring those issues, bring those issues to us, we'll, you know...
I understand. So that was my cautionary tale.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.